Checks written for payroll liabilities for seven, eight, sixteen in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and eighty cents. Manual checks in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents. For a total of one-million, twenty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second, and it has been properly moved and seconded. Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, the only one that I have is for the endowment at the bottom. Did we figure out, sorry. Did we switch that, Gloria?
We did.
Okay, so then, as of June first, we will now pay the electric and the gas out of the endowment. So what's the actual number on that? Is it the fifty, or is it? Right, which account? Fifty, okay, that's all I had. And all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Two thousand and sixteen, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P.M. Councilmember Canaan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and after that, I'll offer an invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful, we have an opportunity to serve the city of Riverton this evening in the capacity of members of the Riverton City Council, and pray for thy insight and understanding, inspiration, that we might be able to do a good job and have an understanding of the issues that come before us. We're grateful for the community in which we live, and we pray that we can make it a good place for all of us to live and get along well together. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. We do have a couple missing people this evening. I'd entertain a motion to excuse Kyle Larson and Mike Bailey from tonight's meeting.
Your Honor, I make a motion to excuse Councilman Mike Bailey and Kyle Larson from this meeting tonight.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I declare that we have a quorum. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Is there any discussion to that? Well, we're gonna have an opportunity for you to speak in a minute. This is, you know, communication from the floor is an agenda item, okay? All right, any discussion by council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye. Okay, communications from the floor. Okay, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Your Honor, we forgot roll call.
We didn't call a roll?
Nope.
No.
Oh, we jumped right over it, I'm sorry. Well, better call the roll then. Hang on, hang on just a minute. Are you gonna do it?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, Megan, call the roll.
Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am here, okay? And now we've gotten that piece of legal business out of the way. Go ahead, tell us what you need.
Mayor, Councilman, Jason Hawk with Bar Ten. I'm here tonight hoping that, I put a piece of paper in front of the secretary yesterday to have you guys take a look at for an open container. I'm hoping for you guys to take a look at tonight. Reason for this is I filled out the paper, I assumed that I could use a catering permit for this event, and my fault for, I filled out the wrong paperwork on this, so I'm hoping for your help on this. If I can tell you more about the event, or if you'd like to hear more about it later, now. It's an event for, that I'm hosting for the Chamber of Commerce, it's called Alive at Five. We're gonna be closing the street in front of Bar Ten this week, doing a barbecue outside, putting up some jumping houses and games for the kids. Have a band, and I thought we would be able to serve alcohol outside at this event with a catering permit. When I came to Kristin, she said I was wrong, and I was supposed to fill out an open container permit, and that needs to be ran through you guys.
Okay, so, I need some clarification then. When did this, when did you file the catering permit?
Um, Monday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yes.
Well, Mr. Weaver helped me out here, is that, so. So if it had been a catering, if a catering permit would have been okay, then staff could have approved it within that time limit?
Your Honor, I believe it says forty-eight hours, or? Yeah, forty-eight hours, we need notice to approve a catering permit.
I see, and so then as a council, though, we decided that we still wanted to look at open container. So what do we do, what do we, what, how did we handle that for the rally, you know, for car show downtown?
Your Honor, those were approved prior. We had open container permits that were on the consent agenda, so all open containers will show up on the consent agenda, and it has in the past. They just have to be on the agenda.
And so we just didn't have enough time to get it on the agenda?
Sir, I think the other thing is for open container, we have public comments on that, and so that was one of our concerns in the past, is giving the public time to comment on an open container permit.
What time's your event gonna go till?
Uh, it's from five to nine o'clock, so before it gets dark out, we'll be done with the event. And honestly, there was a couple people that thought that I would be able to do it with a catering permit as well. So I learned a little something, and I'll make sure that, you know, I have the paperwork correct for. I had a misunderstanding of what the difference between open container and a catering permit was, and that, you know. Kristin explained it to me, so I have a better understanding of that now, but I didn't before this, so that was on me on that.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a couple questions. Number one, question number one is, how long have you known about this event coming up?
For a while.
Okay, and number two, I am not in favor of closing Broadway down at that time, between five and nine P.M. People are getting off of work at five o'clock, and they're gonna have to go around just so you can have, so how many, you said on your application you had about a hundred people there?
Um, you know, it's tough to say what will actually show up to this particular event. We're hoping for that.
So that, and me, to accommodate a hundred people, you're inconveni, inconven, inconveniency about half the population of Riverton to get through Broadway. Broadway, Broadway's a busy street at that time of night.
Yeah, I do understand that. We weren't planning on blocking off the whole street. We were gonna kinda detour through the alley. I did talk to Chief Broadhead about this, and I've talked to the city about how we planned about blocking this off ahead of time, and I think we have a good plan as far as that goes, but I do understand your concern as well, Lee.
I don't have anything else.
He asked my question.
Yeah, he, he?
I just wanna know how long he knew about it before he took the time to process the applications.
All right. Is anybody interested in making a motion to approve this open container permit?
For the sake of discussion, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve these open container permit.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, okay, so what do you think we ought to do? Pardon me, what do you think we ought to do?
I don't think we ought to approve it, personally. This is my personal opinion. It's just inconvenient for at five o'clock at night to block off Broadway, and we haven't seen the plans. I know Chief Broadhead has seen them, but nobody else has, so that's my, my own opinion.
I'm for it. I absolutely think we should. I know that it's kind of going against what we're, we had all agreed on and that kinda stuff, but at the same time, I feel like it gives the community another chance to get out. I mean, the car show was an amazing event, everybody was busy at that. It's not, I mean, people will go around a different block for one day. I'm totally for it.
Sir, I guess my, I'll make a comment, is that, again, going to the chamber meetings, these Alive at Five events are discussed well in advance. I mean, they're already talking about who's doing the next one, so I mean, there, it's nothing that is short notice where somebody doesn't have the opportunity to get the correct paperwork, even for, you know, a catering permit, you know, and well ahead of time to find out that, oh, by the way, that's wrong, you know, we need additional paperwork. And my comment is, is that we have discussed this before, you know, we had the discussion as to whether we wanted staff to approve these types of items, and we voted no on that, because again, we wanted the council to have time to look at those, and we wanted to have time for public opinion. And again, if we're not gonna abide by our own previous decisions or our own rules, then what was the sense of going that route in the first place? We might just as well say, yeah, well, let staff decide everything and back out of it, so again, I disagree.
Didn't we have a previous one that came here and we did approve it?
Yep.
Yes.
We did, because again, it was a short notice type thing, but after that, we got into the discussion as to whether we wanted to continue to have short notice ones, and at that time, we had the discussion, and I believe the council said we didn't wanna have any more walking in, that there was plenty of time. We wanted time for public comment. Again, tonight, you don't have a chance for anybody to come in and speak against shutting down Broadway. I mean.
I'm sorry, I'm still worried.
Guys, I'd be happy to go and make sure that it's okay with people on our block that we do something like this. This is a chamber event, and, you know, all of these paperwork, you know, they cost me money to do, and some, you know, I mean, we're busy in the summer, but on the other hand, you know, sometimes these events fall through. They change from day to day on, if they are gonna go through. Last year, this event did not go through for me because of wind, and I paid fees for this, and it did not go through. So, yeah, it's, I am coming to you a little late in the game on this, and I guess I've done that because of what I've just told you. When we looked things up earlier, I think by law, you guys can pass this, it doesn't have to have time for public comment, but, and guys, I try to, I try to host really nice events and do good things for our downtown, so. And like I said, now I know on what the difference between these two are, and I'll make sure I have my paperwork in line in the future for you guys.
Ms. Rock, what's the occupancy of your establishment? How many can you hold inside? Not how many you, how many?
Ninety-six.
How many are you allowed to, I guess is the question?
Ninety-six, ninety-six is my occupancy.
So, we're looking at a difference, and you're figuring a hundred people are gonna be there, is what you're figuring?
Uh, we're hoping that there's a good amount of people that come out for this.
Okay.
Uh, Chief?
Mr. Mayor.
Did you, you've seen a traffic control plan for this?
You know, not a written map, Your Honor. Mr. Hawk and I have spoken about it. Jim Davis called and asked for permission to shut the street down for this, and I have already given them permission for that. So liquor license or not, or open container permit or not, they're gonna have bouncy houses in the street, so. I mean, that part of it's already been approved.
Okay. So how disappointed would you be if you could only sell alcohol, have alcohol inside?
It's hard to do that for, you know, when we're trying to work with the chamber, and we're trying to make these events what they are. Why would I set up a bouncy house? Why would we, you know, it's kind of. I would be very embarrassed if, if it didn't go through, and I apologize to you guys for doing this, do you? I really do. I didn't think that it would be the ordeal that it is tonight, and I apologize about that, so.
Call for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Yes, sir, well, seeing as how the street's already closed off, Lee.
It's not closed off.
Permission, permission's been given for that, I don't know. I, I have, I guess I, um. Yeah, it was a nice party, wasn't it?
It was.
Yeah, okay, and so that wasn't, that's not a bad thing to do, okay? And so I guess I hate to hang stuff up just to fit a rule. So, I'll vote in favor of it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you guys' help this evening.
Anybody else?
Mayor, council, thank you. I'll make this quick. My name's Eric Carr, Chairman of the Balloon Festival Committee, and I just wanted to express our gratitude to the entire community for the generous support and out, pouring out for the rally. We had an awesome time. We flew Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and it's a very rare, rare year indeed that we get to do that. So, again, thank you to all, everybody from Riverton, everybody that came into Riverton to come up to the festival, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for ramrodding that. What a, what a, what a marvelous thing that was. We just, I mean, you know, the weather does, obviously.
And that was the only part that I took full credit for.
I really, and, and so, and so we're, you know, so we're, you know, we've got somebody in charge of this, maybe we should, maybe we should try to get Eric to be the balloon meister guy forever now, because he can arrange the weather.
You know what, Pat Nuland, our balloon meister, is exceptional, she does a fantastic job, she's a wonderful pilot.
But she can't, she doesn't seem to be able to arrange the weather like you do then.
Well, that is true. We'll grant you that.
Okay.
But we were extremely happy to see you came up on Media Day, and were able to, I believe, get a flight.
I did, I got, I did fly, and that was, that was impressive.
Excellent.
That was a lot of fun, and, but what was more fun was, was the succeeding days where we were able to continue to fly, and last year, I helped crew a balloon, and we stretched it out and blow it up and laid it back down again.
Excellent.
You know, so I had, we had experience, we had experience in trying to get a balloon in the air, but we never got off the ground, and so this year was terrific. So, so it's a, it's a, it's a great thing, it was a wonderful weekend for the city of Riverton, and whatever part you played, you should take credit for it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yes.
All right. With the Finance Director, please read the consent agenda items by title only.
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes July fifth, two thousand and sixteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes July nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations, July nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Approval of Municipal Court report for June two thousand and sixteen.
Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, the Finance Committee recommendation for approvals of claims to be paid in the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Checks written for payroll liabilities for seven, eight of sixteen in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and eighty cents, and manual checks in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents, for a total of one-million, twenty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Next item is introduction of an RPD dispatcher, Angela Manzaneras. Chief?
Your Honor, as you know, we like to introduce our dispatchers and our public officers to everybody, and Angela has been with us about four months now, five months now, and all the way through her training program already. Angela previously dispatched in the Sweetwater County Combined Center, right, when it became a combined center, and briefly at the Sheriff's Office here, but decided our way was way better than seconding, so. Oh, did I say that publicly? Sorry. Her husband Jerry's here to pin her badge on, so we thought we'd do that and introduce her around. Everybody, Angela Manzaneras.
Terrific. The next item is TSA recognition award.
Thank you, Your Honor, council. I appreciate this opportunity to highlight one of our Public Works employees. As you, as you are aware, we have a wonderful team at our airport. Not only do we have trained employees who operate the airfield and respond to emergencies, but there are also trained law enforcement officers who help with making sure that our airport is safe, that passengers that fly have confidence, and they work great in conjunction with our TSA officers at the airfield. So, again, I appreciate this opportunity to highlight one of our employees, and could I ask Rob Healy to please come and join me? Recently, we had a visit from Rick Gordon, who is the Federal Security Director for the state of Wyoming, for the Transportation Security Administration. And during his visit, he took a moment to highlight Mr. Healy for his everyday efforts at providing great service to the city of Riverton, and for his assistance and his team effort with the Transportation Security Administration. Basically, the TSA has an internal program where they recognize excellence in performance and good qualities among the people that they work with, and our station agent at Riverton Regional from TSA recognized Rob. Rob wasn't even aware this was happening, but because he was prepared on a daily basis to assist and perform at a high level, he was recognized. So during the visit of Mr. Gordon, he wanted to make sure that I was aware of this performance, and he presented me a challenge coin that I can now present to Mr. Healy, so thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, and thank you, Rob, for your service rendered to the city. The next item is the speed limit reduction on Airport Road recommendation. Uh, the next item is the speed limit reduction on Airport Road recommendation. Chief of Police's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council. So, we were approached about, uh, considering a reduction at the speed limit on Airport Roads, currently posted at fifty-five miles per hour. And there are really four reasons to talk about a justification for a lower speed limit. One of those is that there's no shoulder, there's no paved shoulder, that the shoulder is pretty unimproved along most of the length of that roadway. Uh, you know, secondly, there, uh, the road itself is starting to degrade because of increased traffic. There's no specific plan, at least that, that we're aware of, to repave that or rebuild that road anytime in the foreseeable future. Uh, the Job Corps site by opening has increased the traffic along that roadway. Uh, and, and lastly, we found there's three school bus stops along Airport Road. There's also a little bit of a concern, particularly where Valley View intersects, that the sightlines are not great and, and could justify a, a lower speed limit as well. So, after driving that road several times myself and just trying to see what was a comfortable speed and what seemed safe, uh, forty-five miles an hour seems pretty reasonable. I queried the officers throughout the department and the airport officers as well. All of the feedback that I got back from those officers was that the speed limit should be reduced to forty-five miles an hour. Uh, went to two of the biggest users of that road, which would be Job Corps and also the FedEx facility that's up there. Both of the managers of those facilities supported a reduction in, in the speed limit there. Now, some of that, that Airport Road crosses tribal ground, so I went out and met with the Northern Arapaho first. Uh, their business council took a roll call vote and agreed that they thought forty-five miles an hour was a more appropriate speed along there. And then last week, I met with the Eastern Shoshone Business Council. They also took a roll call vote to support a reduction in the speed limit. So, the recommendation is that we reduce the speed limit from fifty-five to a, to a forty-five mile an hour zone.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Chairman entertain a motion?
Your Honor. Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the reduction in the speed limit on Airport Road from fifty-five miles per hour to forty-five.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion vote, Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Thanks, Chief, for your work on that. The next item is ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero four, third and final reading, residential zone name change. Would the Finance Director please read ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero four by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero four and ordinance amending title seventeen zoning to revise Chapter seventeen point one-two, zoning districts designated, seventeen point one-six, general requi- requirements, seventeen point two-eight, a residential district, seventeen point three-two, B residential district, seventeen point three-six, BGA residential district, and seventeen point four-zero, C residential district, of the Riv- Riverton municipal code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Chairman entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero four on third and final reading.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we adopt, uh, ordinance number sixteen dash zero zero four on third and final reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Uh, would the City Secretary please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Martin Canaan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sean Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon?
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker?
Yes, and I declare that the motion is passed. The next item is Council Committee reports and Councilmen, Council Members Roundtable. So, Council, uh, Councilmember Gibbon, have you got anything for us this evening?
Um, just that I went to the Senior Board Meeting at the Senior Center today. There was Christie and Bill Miller were there as well. Christie is from the Department of Wyoming, and she does the Aging Committee part of it. And then Bill Miller is from the LPLG, is that how you say it? That's right.
LGL.
LGL. Um, and so, they have cut all funding to the Senior Center, and, um, they've given them two weeks to try to come up with a new resolution of some sort, because they're too high risk, so they don't feel as though the grant is gonna be spent accordingly. They did bring up the fact that they owe the seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cent back into the endowment. Um, I just wanted to clarify on that, that that was not an oversea, or we didn't look at the wrong dates or anything like that. They truly do owe that money. And we've made the first payment on the electric bill and the gas bill, well, actually, just the electric bill, sorry, um, for one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty cents today. Since now we are paying the electric and gas out of the endowment, the city is paying the seniors water. So, I know that it's definitely coming down to the wire. I know they're trying to figure out ways to continue to keep the center open. And I'm hoping they come to a conclusion really fast. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate your, uh, your diligence in pursuing that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Charlie?
Just a reminder, um, starting tonight and tomorrow and all the way through Saturday, Riverton's gonna be invaded with seventeen Little League teams, um, from all across the, pretty much the southwestern side of the state. So, if you see 'em out there in their uniforms, you know, wish 'em luck, ask 'em how they do, um, let 'em know that we appreciate them coming here, 'cause I think the better feedback that we get from them, the better opportunity we have to bring stuff like this to Riverton, and that's what we want, is to bring stuff here for our kids and our community to be able to enjoy and to be able to grow and develop, so... If you see 'em out there, wish 'em luck, come down to the baseball field. Games start at nine o'clock in the morning, go to about nine o'clock at night, so come down and watch, um, some good baseball and support the kids throughout the state.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Uh, Your Honor, we had, uh, School District Number Twenty-Five Recreation Board Meeting Monday night, and we, uh, set aside some money for the, uh, TAP grant for the, uh, the pathways that, uh, Jim Gores is in charge of. So, we set some money aside, hoping that, that they get the grant. And we paid bills, and that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Canaan?
Uh, sir, just a reminder, um, uh, at the Fremont County Rodeo on the first of August is Military Appreciation Night. Uh, if you go down and show your military ID, your veterans' ID prior to the first, you can get a free ticket to the rodeo that night, and you can get a reduced price ticket, uh, for your spouse. Uh, it's here, it's here at the, at the Riverton Fairgrounds.
Okay, free ticket at the rodeo, okay? And, uh, reduced, reduced price for the wife, okay? All right. City Administrators, report?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd just like to thank the Rendezvous Committee for all they're doing and have done with this event. I, I would like to put a ploy out there, I know there's, people probably don't realize it, but I believe there's only six members of the committee.
Pretty close.
So, that's pretty small to run a large event like that, and I know there's a few of 'em on there that have been doing it for thirty-plus years. So, I'd encourage anybody out there that's interested in serving to step forward and, and, and join that committee. I mean, that is the highlight for, for Riverton for the year, uh, so I'd encourage people to, uh, participate in that. And then, my second ploy is keep purchasing those tickets on FlyRiverton.com and, and, make it a success. Thank you.
Thank you, so, all right. Thanks, Stephen. Did I get it right, reading that report, that we actually sold more tickets in July than they expected? Is that the, did, did you, did you get that in, out of the report?
Your Honor, between Sheridan and Riverton, we are exceeding revenue projections for the month of July.
Good, thank you. All right, and, and we were at Rotary today, and, and, uh, Lori, uh... Ridgeway, sorry, okay, said that she had, uh, just, just done the round trip and, uh, was able to hook up without any difficulty with other airlines in Denver, and, uh, was blown away by the food basket onboard the plane, and, uh, uh, you know? And, uh, and they had a great time and thought it was, thought it was wonderful, and, uh, she's all ready to go again. So, so I, I just think that, uh, you know, if we can, if we can get folks to ride it, we'll, we'll be doing good. Speaking about the airport, we have a vacancy on the Airport Board. Uh, George Wright, uh, resigned, and, uh, we would like to appoint Jim Gores to fill that, uh, regular position on the Airport Board. And then we'll, uh, r- run an ad in the newspaper to, uh, solicit, uh, people who are interested in being alternates to the board. And so, the, the, the function of the board is important, the number of members of the board is set by law, uh, and, uh, and so, we have to, uh, uh, but, so if we can have some alternates, sometimes somebody's missing. If we've got an alternate, we can set somebody on there and still have a quorum. So, that makes sure that our Airport Board functions and, and, uh, and will operate. So, Jim's, Jim's been a faithful, uh, attendee in those meetings and, uh, um, is up to speed on what's going on, and, uh, and so, we'll, we'll let him fill that position. Uh, Jeff Varoski was the other alter- alternate, and, uh, he is, uh, leaving Riverton. His wife apparently took a job in Cheyenne, and he's moving down there, too. And, uh, and so, we've lost both of our alternates now, and, and so, we need to replace them to, to keep that, uh, board functional. The other issue is, um, uh, the Wind River Visitors Council. Uh, Jim, uh, Davis, who's on the Chamber of Commerce, has been on there for two terms, uh, to, uh, represent the city of Riverton, and, uh, he can only be on there for two terms, and so, now we're looking for somebody else to do that. And Ryan Preston, who is in the audience here with us today, has expressed an interest to do that. I've got his letter of interest here, and I've read that, and thankful, thank, thank you for your, uh, for your interest in serving, and, uh, um, we'd be glad to appoint you to that. And so, you should, we, we probably need a motion, right? So, can I get a motion to appoint, uh, Jim Gores, the Airport Board, and Ryan Preston, to the Wind River Visitors Council, please?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, we approve, uh, Jim Gores for Airport Board, and what was his last name?
Ryan Preston.
And Ryan Preston to the, uh, Visitors Council.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Thank you, Ryan, for, for coming tonight, and, uh, and, uh, thank you for representing us on the Visitors Council. Thank you. That's it, as far as I can tell.
I do have one thing. I, I, I'm sure everybody knows, if you haven't read the paper, you should get out, um, two of our Babe Ruth teams have gone up to, um, their district tournaments and have come back as state champions.
Oh, yeah.
So, Babe Ruth is gonna be represented by two teams from Riverton, Wyoming, out in Washington, starting next week. Um, so, that's, that's another kudos for Riverton. Um, just, you know, the, the community and the youth are coming together, and they're, they're representing Riverton well out there. Everybody's saying good things about our young men and ladies that are going out there and representing, so...
That, that's terrific, and they're trying to raise some money for that, right?
Yes, sir, they are.
Yeah.
Your Honor, on the same token that, uh, Riverton, for the first time in history, is sending a girls' softball team to San Bernardino, best pitching team.
Yeah, I saw that in the paper, yeah. What a, what a...
Congratulations to the girls.
What a deal. What a deal.
Their loss.
Their loss. Great. Okay, so, um, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor votes aye, and we are adjourned at, uh, seven forty.